Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting for City Council for Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to waive the Rules of Council, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And in our moment of silence, I ask that you please keep several people in your thoughts and prayers. I'm saddened to announce the passing of Toto Fisher, longtime member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust Board of Trustees, and of Dawn Mercurio, who was a longtime police officer for the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry, I just would also like to acknowledge the passing of Larry Lagatuta, the owner of Enrico Biscotti Company in the Strip District. We're very sad.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that. I couldn't think of the third one. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have two to be presented by Councilman Coghill and myself. Councilman Coghill?
Yep. There he is. He took his hat off for us and everything. I've had the pleasure of knowing Sean since, I don't know, way back when. We've played on many ball clubs together and against each other many times. It's always better to play with him. He was a really good ball player. But I also know his wife, Mary, and the McGee family, all from Brookline, and his son Tyler, who many may remember he did a little stint here with me, his daughter Amanda, and her husband, Brad, so, and the little grandkids here. What's your names?
Emmy.
Emmy, okay. Thanks, guys. Well, thanks for being here. You know, Sean is a longtime employee with Public Works. He's been running the Parks Division for many years now, and nobody knows the fields better than he. I'm already getting calls, you know, worried about what we're going to do with the fields, because he takes care of them as if he's playing on them, which he has many times. So with that, we wanted to recognize Sean and his family. Whereas Sean Trainer grew up in Brookline, where he played baseball, basketball, and swam, Brookline Community Center throughout his childhood. I didn't know you were a swimmer. Sean went to Resurrection Grade School and then Seton LaSalle High School, graduating in 1981. After high school, Sean attended Trinidad State Junior College, where he played baseball, and then Point Park University. And Sean started working for the city of Pittsburgh in August of 1985 and continued to put down roots in his community by marrying his wife, Mary McGee, and raising his two children, Amanda and Tyler, in Beachview. And whereas Sean has been a constant presence in the Brookline and Beachview communities by coaching numerous baseball and soccer programs at Brookline Community Center and basketball at Brookline Regional Catholic Grade School. Sean has also coached a Seton LaSalle Regional High School for baseball, basketball, and soccer teams for 20-plus years. Sean has devoted his life to the city of Pittsburgh. He first became a laborer in 1985 before becoming a tractor operator in the year 2000. Next, Sean assumed the role of foreman and is currently the Parks Maintenance Manager, where he cares for the same parks he played in as a child and coached for many years. And in his retirement, Sean will continue to do what he does best: coach and mentor his grandson Camden and his granddaughter Amelia during their sports and life journeys and will continue to be an asset to the community. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Sean Trainer for his service to his community and the city. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 27, 2023, to be Sean Trainer Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion go first.
Second. All in favor? Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the city.
Come on, somebody step up. Come on, Tyler. Come on.
He worked in parks.
So here's the proclamation. Just hold it like that. We're going to get a picture, okay?
Wait, do you want to ask the Director? The Director Pollan's here.
Oh, yeah. Director Pollan, would you please come up? You're coming up next anyway. You could keep the family there for a minute and then...
Just come up and say a few words.
Joe, Joe, you too. Bring up the Public Works people, please. Come on up, Bobby. That's right. That's right. Mr. Pollan just said he couldn't done what he has done for many years without this supporting cast, who I know very well, these groups of characters, and getting a little long in the tooth he's getting now, but you still all look very good.
Let the Director say something. Tom Pollan, do you want to say something?
Tom, do you want to say something?
Superintendent Pollan?
Not really.
How about you, Joe? Come on. Come on, man.
I'm going to say something. I don't think people realize how many phone calls the Public Works people get, from snow removal to trees, but our playgrounds are something people do not play around with. When they want that ball field ready, they want that ball field ready. And I myself have called them at 3:00 in the morning and they responded. So I just want to thank you for your service and for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, we're ready.
You can all stay here. You can all stay here. And Director, I mean Superintendent Pollan, can you please come forward?
Oh, you got to not let the Public Works stay here still, right?
No, it's your time. It's your turn to talk about Superintendent Pollan. Superintendent, I just want to say Tom Pollan has been... Yeah, tell your family up. I didn't see her.
His father's here.
Okay, I didn't see. He's young compared to my mom. Nancy, I didn't even see you back there. How are you? Hi, Mr. Pollan. Hi, girls. Let me just say, when I met the Pollan family, Nancy was working at Stevens School in Elliot, and the girls were very young, about just a little bit older than their girls right now, their kids right now. But I've met Tom Pollan, and over the years, he has taken brutal phone calls from me, from many of the athletic associations. Bessie Miller has your name, like, written everywhere. I just...
We were texting yesterday.
Yeah, she texted me this morning, and I wanted to tell her to come down for this. But I will just say that you have always responded with an amazing team that you have. The Parks Crews, they do tremendous job for the city of Pittsburgh. Always, like I said, a phone call away, always doing, going the extra mile for the athletic associations, and they're just an amazing team, and you've done an amazing job working with them. Sometimes I think we fought, but sometimes he... But that's part of the job. That's part of the job. I remember when Corey O'Connor wanted to give you a pay raise, and I'm like, wait a minute. He said, "That guy gets things done." And that's, I mean, so, and I want to say Tom lives in my district. He lives in Short Hills City. So I don't know if I should tell everybody that. Anyway, whereas Tom Pollan started with the city of Pittsburgh in 1987, working in BBI, currently known as Permits, License, and Inspections, PLNI, and has worked his way up to the Superintendent of the Division of Parks, Forestry, and the Department of Public Works, in the Department of Public Works, the position that he has held since 2014. And whereas during his tenure as an Operations Manager, he developed data-driven spreadsheets, which he used to advocate for routine maintenance, proper equipment, and resources. I think I told him throw those away before, but they did come in handy. This detailed information enabled the city to earn a trust of, for the public land park score rating of 15 out of 100 cities in 2019, up from ranking number 80. And whereas Tom's attention to detail has taught his Parks Maintenance Managers and Foremen to become better managers, he leads his team with empathy and a growth mentality, fostering a sense of community while cheering everyone on for further success. His admin team has grown from eight to 21, and he now oversees 170 employees in total. And whereas Director Hornstein recognizes his commitment to compassion and care to all employees within the Parks Division regarding their own development and success, in fact, prior to his promotion to Superintendent, he advocated for properly funding the management of our parks. His staff see him as a great mentor and with a willingness to teach and/or to help whomever asks. And whereas Tom has been a lifelong resident of the city of Pittsburgh in Short Hills City and has, well, before that was Elliot?
Wind Gap and Elliot.
Wind Gap and Elliot. We'll leave Mount Oliver City out of it. He has been a loving husband to his wife Nancy for 33 years and is a wonderful dad to his daughters Elizabeth and Emma. And whereas he is the absolute silliest papap to his grandchildren Liam, seven, Paisley, four, and Madeline, three. If he is not joking around with his grandkids, you will find him playing with his pups Shelby and Sadie, watching a murder mystery show, or obsessing over the Weather Channel. If not home, he is enjoying family vacation on the beach in Ocean City, Maryland. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Tom Pollan for his dedication to the city of Pittsburgh and its parks. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 27, 2023, to be Tom Pollan Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion go first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation to approve.
I just want to thank everybody, City Council and the administration for this. The biggest thank you goes to my family for putting up with me. They, you guys may not know it, but the phone is on, as Councilwoman Smith says, at any time she's calling. They put up with that for many years of me taking those calls, and so greatly appreciate it. I think our parks have come a long way, especially recently, and, you know, I just want to give these guys a shout out. That's, you know, I just helped guide them along the way, but they're the ones that do the work, and I think we're making great headway. And so I'm happy, hopefully you're happy with what the product is. And I also want to thank everybody at Heavy Equipment. I also oversee Heavy Equipment, and that's, you know, does the maintenance of all of our landscape equipment and also does the snow removal equipment. So the guys are working in the wintertime, making sure those plows and those spreaders are being kept up. So they're doing a really good job, and we're at 90-some-plus turnaround for what they're responsible for. So I'm really, I'm really proud of the team that I've built. So thank you very much. I do appreciate this.
Members want to come up for the photo, please?
Sure.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to join for the photo?
I'll take care of that. You get the team. How's that?
Director Schmitt, you want to come up?
Laura.
You know what I have to say? You know what I have to say? People won't hear. You know what I have to say? People won't hear. My shirts are inside. My jacket's on backwards. I have to go change. Do you mind?
Okay. So we have a, so we have a number to be read into the record. I believe Councilwoman Strasburger has one, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Warwick, and Madam President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, June 30, 2023, to be Paula K. Davis Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Burgess presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of Friday, June 23, 2023, to be International Association of Ministers' Wives and Ministers' Widows Week in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July 4, 2023, to be Jim Gregg Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, June 30, 2023, to be Rosemary Shimp Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, June 22, 2023, to be the Art of Living Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or liberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profoundly will not be permitted. Once you are called, please recite your name and neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsa, Bujja, Nigeria. No music today, but probably tomorrow or next week to accompany what I have to say. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President, 2024, 412-969-7997 is my primary U.S. Teltext. University of Pittsburgh, Theory of Sport Inventor. Pittsburgh National and Global Information Intelligence Networks reporter, editor, and founder. We're looking for people who are really interested in and focused on investigative reporting in this city, which is almost non-existent. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council, PCC, is the support for the promotion of Pittsburgh-based U.S. American football. An example is the PCC proclamation for Sam Bam Clancy, Pittsburgh basketballer, footballer, 21 June 2023, PPC, All Democratic Party. People use dialectical oppositionalism to include irrationally, I think, Pittsburgh pro LGBTQIA and pro non-LGBTQIA in their approach to sex-gender identity formation, on the one hand, and the PCC uses unilateral de-oppositionalism to exclude irrationally anti-U.S. Pittsburgh American pro football and collegiate football information intelligence, on the other hand. Sam Clancy's proclamation was all pro, and he was clearly banned. No mention of Tony Dorsett by Mr. Lavelle or the Council. Dorsett, the Pitt Panther NFL Hall of Fame U.S. American footballer, Hopeville High School and University of Pittsburgh graduate. Dorsett and Pitt Panther NFL Hall of Famer is losing his mind due to cerebral traumatic encephalopathy, and he blames Pitt and the NFL for this condition. But no talk from Lavelle or PCC. No mention of Mike Webster, who died of CTE. No mention of Bennett Omalu, the person who was working in the Allegheny County Coroner Office that identified CTE as the cause of death of Webster. But rather, what they did here and across the NFL was to roast him. He's right, and the NFL is now paying hundreds of millions of dollars in damages. Do you support or do you oppose U.S. American football in the city of Pittsburgh on the grounds that it is dangerous to these people?
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true city of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation in Bon Air. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Arks and trees, Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green space. The residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why should we be paying for this detrimental building? The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controllers to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with on-air schools. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of block-stopping and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't he advocate for we, the people who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who did Michael Lamb serve? Former Mayor Pedudo was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint a board that says the detrimental school building should remain? They did not care about the property value and quality of life issues that harm Bon Air. The Pittsburgh Public Schools stated, "Who guidance?" When it closes schools for months, why would a Pennsylvania school district use a private global club called the World Health Organization as the authority to shut down our tax-funded public school system? This points to further waste, fraud, and abuse. Sweden and Florida are two examples of superiority of business and educational outcomes. StopTheWho.com. No more global mayors or global Pittsburgh public schools decisions. StopTheWho.com. Last week, a man named Joshua spoke about being adopted from a child sex trafficking baby mill. He deserves respect for speaking to his power. Deutsche Bank and JP Morgan have to pay the victims of Jeffrey Epstein, who ran a child sex trafficking operation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcia Bandis.
Marcia Bandis.
Bandis, excuse me.
It's okay. I'm used to it. Good day, everyone. My name is Marcia Bandis. I live in Squirrel Hill, and I am the Chairwoman for the Pittsburgh Pro-CEDOC Coalition. My purpose for speaking with you today is to share what we have seen happen to the Gender Equity Commission over the past year and a half and request your support. The Intersectional Gender Equity Commission, I'll call it the GEC, to be led by the Executive Director, was created after a city ordinance was passed unanimously in December 2016. Gender inequity is well-known in Pittsburgh's black community. To quantify these inequities, Phase 1 of a multi-tiered intersectional gender analysis was executed. It used census and publicly available data resulting in the Pittsburgh Inequality Across Gender and Race Report, but it was unable to publicly quantify the inequities experienced by Hispanics, LGBTQIA people, immigrants, and other minority groups. Community outreach, along with black communities and in collaboration with the LGBTQIA Commission, was needed. Phase 2 of the gender analysis sought input on what types of programs would best serve them. This input could be used to recommend, implement, and measure policies and programs. The Gender Equity Commission can recommend and advocate, but it is up to the city to choose and implement. With the advent of COVID-2020 in 2020, community outreach was hampered, but the GEC continued to function. In 2021, Mayor Pedudo lost the primary and the GEC Executive Director resigned. In 2022, the GEC Commissioners and I spoke with the mayor separately multiple times and were told that an executive director was identified and in the works, while in actuality, the budget was spent elsewhere and there was no money in the 2023 budget. Thus, our sense of urgency. It is only now that we have written this letter to the mayor and asked, it may sound a bit blunt, but please recognize, we have been asking for over a year. The mayor has been hiring people to work on gender equity issues. It's exciting and reaffirms the value of the work that the GEC has done, but it does not eliminate the need for a fully functional Gender Equity Commission. Intersectional gender equity is a complex systemic issue and by its very nature is not easily eliminated. Outreach must continue and policies and programs advocated for. Who is going to advocate for a second gender analysis to see if what has been implemented is working? The purpose of creating the gender equity led by an executive director, in addition to it being in the law, is to maintain gender equity as a priority across changing administrations until Pittsburgh truly is the most livable city for all. We ask for your support to rebuild the Gender Equity Commission and demonstrate the city's long-term commitment to gender equity. Thank you. And I have, thank you, and I have packets here for the Councilmen.
Thank you. That exhauster list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, please. Take your time. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Garner. I'm sorry. I have served. I live for Seven Fifteen Mercy. My niece, Santi, she worked for Rona Racing. Okay. She got the office, told them to put me out. She got papers on my house. It's exciting and reaffirms the value of the work that the GEC has done, but it does not eliminate the need for a fully functional Gender Equity Commission. Intersectional gender equity is a complex systemic issue and by its very nature is not easily eliminated. Outreach must continue and policies and programs advocated for. Who is going to advocate for a second gender analysis to see if what has been implemented is working? The purpose of creating the gender equity led by an executive director, in addition to it being in the law, is to maintain gender equity as a priority across changing administrations until Pittsburgh truly is the most livable city for all. We ask for your support to rebuild the Gender Equity Commission and demonstrate the city's long-term commitment to gender equity. Thank you. And I have, thank you, and I have packets here for the councilman.
Thank you. That exhausts all the registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, please. Take your time. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Garner. I'm sorry. I had a surgery. I live from 715 Mercy. My niece saw a shanti girl. She worked for a race. Okay. She got the office, told them, put me out. She got papers on my house. She come see everything I'm doing. My room, somebody's house. She gonna see everything I do in my house. What I do for her. I had a stroke. I can move like this. Why she with me for that? For nothing. I lived out here seventeen years when I had a stroke. Now she went out of here for, she want for pro-race. Her shanti a race. I don't know. Why she doing that to me? What I'm going to? I don't know. Could you help me? That's all I want to know. That's all I want to know. I'm done.
Thank you. Just for clarity, council doesn't interact when it's your time to speak. We don't want to take any time from you.
Sometimes with certain people you do. My name is Yvonne Brown.
Excuse me, Ms. Brown, please, one second. Dr. Hobson, will you go over and meet with her and get her information and see if Ricky Moody can work with her and help her? Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Brown.
Yes. I brought Robin down, and I brought her down before, but I brought her down this time because she insisted. I'm not really sure whether you could help her or not, but she wanted to come, so I brought her. Anytime someone say they want to come to City Council, I'm going to bring them. I've had many say they gonna come and don't. Now, Public Works just gave them proclamation. I mean, you talked about the good works. You remember, I was trying to tell you, Mr. Lavelle, that the black man, big tall black man, that was joking with you when you came up and said that he used to paint for Buncher, the one you talk about, Lawrenceville, that big company. He said he was a painter for five years. He went to the park, was sitting in the park, painting all over his pants. When he stood up, he was fussing about it. Public Works, one of your employees, took and told him, he has the big cart, that he had no business being here without a license. They wanted to see his license. I said to him then, no, they should have got your name and number. I said, they wouldn't have did a white person like that. He swerving down, he was coming down here, and he didn't. But they ended up, I told them, they got a proclamation because you did not tell how they treated you. Now, I'm gonna start this. I got a lot of papers that I've been writing for years, so I want you to listen to this. Citizen, when there was an act of domestic, was there an act of domestic terrorism? I remember how on TV, an officer that was accused said, chief, I'm not a criminal, I'm not a criminal. However, the chief replied, anytime you intentionally or accidentally harm or injure anyone, you are a criminal. Now, I feel like this. This Dr. D.A. Sapala, those men intentionally came out of the store, assaulted those women, and it said that the employers were behind glass. And they came out and assaulted, they almost knocked one woman's head up against the thing. They were beating them, these are foreign men. And they ended up giving them, I think, a summary. They didn't do criminal. This, one of these men that beat up his wife, he had criminal charges for beating up his wife, but the black women that he beat up, you said it wasn't that important. I have here, thank you, this is in 2015. Thank you, all the speakers, employees, employers, business owners. I agree, city council members should come up to Shop &amp; Save on Center Avenue. The concern, substandard meat, rotten fruit and vegetables, rotten cucumber on Facebook, bakery day-old bread was charged more, priced more than the bread they made that day. Five citizens I know told me that they were there or they were not allowed back in the store. I'm telling you, and then it says-
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilwoman Reverend Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilwoman Gross, for Councilwoman Burgess.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm Gross, I'm sorry. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for letting me know that my jacket was on backwards. And Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thanks, Councilwoman Lavelle, for filling in for me there.
Council, excuse me, Councilwoman Kraus presents Bill Number 1662, Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in lieu of taking that eminent domain on certain properties necessary for completion of a slab remediation project along Saline Street in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Entering into these temporary construction easements will come at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of $3. Bill 1663, Resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the bridge over Route 51 near Woodruff Street, also referred to as the Parking Lot Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $625,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost not to exceed $1,250. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thanks for filling in there for a second. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology, Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilwoman Warwick. Is she on?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman. I hope your child feels better.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1664, Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and any amendment or amendments thereto with Remini Street, Inc., to extend the term of unified software support and services for J.D. Edwards, Oracle Technology, and Oracle Database at a cost not to exceed $595,131 over four years in five months.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development, Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilwoman, Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1665, ordering amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article II, Base Zoning District Chapter 905.04, RIV Riverfront Districts to add fresh food access as a performance point option. And Bill 1666, Resolution at no cost to the city approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G. for Allegheny General Hospital, entitled Hospital Institutional Master Plan dated March 23rd, March 2023, on properties owned EMI, Educational Medical Institution District 22nd Ward, First Council District.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one bill and one resolution. Let's take the bill first.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1668, Resolution transferring the amount of $10,000 within the 2023 operating budget from city council salaries and wages regular to council as a body for the purpose of professional services. And Bill Number 1675, Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution 539 of 2016 as amended, entitled, authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contract or agreement or agreements with Granicus, Inc. for software upgrades, server hosting services, and annual maintenance of Ledger Star Agenda Management and Video Streaming in order to extend the contract an additional 12 months for an additional cost of $65,249.49 for total cost not to exceed $436,906.10.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to waive the rules of counsel for Bill 1675?
Motion to waive the rules of counsel for Bill 1675 so that it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's, the bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda, thank you. And now we'll move on to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. And we'll begin with Councilwoman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Councilwoman Lavelle. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1658, Reporter of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 21, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1629, Resolution amending Resolution 89 of 2023, which authorized the City Controller to accept updated financial system account strings and pay invoices for those contracts whose funding sources shifted from the Office of Equity into the Office of the Mayor by adding an additional contract to the list.
Okay. Thank you. And we're going to skip over public safety and come to that at the end, and we'll go to Councilman Bobby Wilson.
We have to do the vote.
I'm sorry.
We didn't vote.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you not vote? All in favor? Wait.
We need to vote on-
Wait, Madam Clerk, which one are we on?
We're on Bill 41 under Councilwoman Lavelle for reports of committee.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you please call the vote?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed, and we'll go, move on to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management,
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1661, Reporter of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for June 27, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1630, Resolution amending Resolution 710 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government agreement through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program and to enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto as necessary with Carisoft Technology Corp. for Google Cloud subscription services, Google Assured Workloads to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform, and to add Astronomer Cloud Scheduling, Tools Training, and Installation Services, increasing the 2024 funding for Astronomer and Google Assured Workloads by $240,000 for a total not to exceed $4,598,824.38. Bill 1631, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Indoor View to improve the management of the City of Pittsburgh's facility spaces for total cost not to exceed $12,600.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed, and we'll go to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1660, Reporter of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 21, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1536, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program, and approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Habitat for Humanity, increasing East End Cooperative Ministry, and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. It was finally passed. Councilmen, go back to public safety. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness. And do you have an amendment?
I don't know if we have them ready yet.
Well, momentarily.
We'll have it momentarily. And we'll let Chris Potter entertain us.
Yeah.
(laughing).
I'd be fine with that, but he's already gone. Okay, good.
You ready?
Yeah, you can read it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, well, you have to give her the bill. Wait till she comes.
Wait till you-
Wait till Madam Clerk comes back so she can get the bill.
Good deal.
I apologize, but we worked around the clock. Madam Clerk, can you, we're going to get the bill from Councilman Coghill. Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness, we're going to get the bill and read it so people know what we're amending here.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1659, Reporter of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 21, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1628, Resolution amending Resolution 745, effective 2019, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for body-worn cameras and tasers to the Bureau of Police at an additional cost of $45,277,527.45 over 10 years. This new contract amends the existing agreement and includes new provisions for body-worn cameras, tasers, and other related support services. And Bill Number 1643, Resolution amending Resolution Number 321 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc. for the provision- with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc. for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment, and retail, related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety. By extending the term for six additional months, costs for these commodities will vary based on departmental need.
We can take the one bill, right?
Yeah, we could do 1643.
Could we take Bill 1643? Madam Clerk, Councilman, is there any, you've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Not on 1643.
1643, that's the uniforms, something separate.
There she is.
Thank you, Louise.
No pressure. We're just all waiting.
Thanks, Louise. Do you want to pass that out to members?
That's just, I just have my copy. But we can pass 1643.
So let's go to 1643. Is there any discussion on 1643? If not, we'll just do the bills together. Let's just do the amendment for this second bill and then for the first bill. After members see the amendment.
What was in the original?
Okay. Can you please make sure one of the amendments goes onto the public podium too, please? Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor Friesen.
Louise, when you're done passing it, she has a question, okay?
And can you make sure Councilwoman Warwick and Councilman Wilson, Councilman Wilson and Councilman Burgess all see the amendment too?
Just got to change the letter, the wording.
Do we have to go back again?
The verbiage needs to change. Yes.
Do we have to go back again? I think we should recess this meeting for just a few, five minutes.
This is a simple fix.
We're going to recess this meeting for 10 minutes to give the clerk's office a chance to get the amendment together.
Motion to recess.
Thank you.
Second.
Five minutes. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Look. Good morning. Welcome back to Pittsburgh City Council reconvened regular meeting. Can I have a motion to reconvene?
They're moved.
In a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is reconvened. And we will continue with the public safety bills. Madam Clerk, could you read them one more time because, for anybody who missed the first part of the meeting?
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1628, Resolution Amending Resolution 745, effective 2019, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for body worn cameras and tasers to the Bureau of Police at an additional cost of $45,277,527.45 over 10 years. This new contract amends the existing agreement and includes new provisions for body worn cameras, tasers, and other related support services. And Bill 1643, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 321 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc. for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment, and related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety by extending the term for six additional months. Costs for these commodities will vary based on departmental need.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills, Councilman Coghill?
Should I make a motion to amend 1628?
Yeah.
Motion to amend Bill Number 1628.
We have a motion to amend. We have a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, if I could. I'm going to try to explain. First of all, I want to apologize for the confusion and the recess and everything that went along with it. But it was imperative that we pass this today under the new conditions. When Public Safety Director Leishmit came to us with this proposal, we were all a little bit sticker shocked. You know, it's a lot of money. And we understand the importance of it. You know, every major city needs this protection, not only for our citizens, but for the police officers as well. So there's really no getting around it. In today's world, it's kind of, there's only a couple of companies that really do this. So we're constrained to, you know, they're, you know, they're, you know, whatever, whatever they set out, we're almost forced into doing it because if we want this service, which we so desperately need. I will say that Director Schmidt and some other members met yesterday, and we explained how it was a lot of money. And Director Schmidt, I want to commend him. He got on the phone last night, talked to the company, worked out a new deal, saved us roughly $6 million just by getting on the phone. And it was important for this company to close this today. And with this new savings, I'm completely comfortable at this point in passing this as it is. And I'll open it up to other members, any questions they might have. I hope I explained that well enough.
Thank you. I'm going to have a lot to say because I want to thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm glad we had this, this conversation. And I appreciate the councilman's passion, commitment, and leadership in making certain that we were not going to recommit this bill today, and to fighting for taxpayers to get the best bang for the buck and, you know, get the services that we need for the best price that we can get. The, the reason that I was so adamant about the passage of this bill and vocal my support of it is that we, we need to provide for public safety officials to have the, the tools that are necessary to do the difficult jobs we ask them to do, especially in a very difficult environment that we are in today. And unfortunately, Councilwoman Gross and I, we're, we're talking a little bit off camera, that we just, we live in a world where everything has to be verified and validated in some way, shape, or form to have a, a stable chain of evidence that if, when, and as these things come to prosecution, we can defend the actions that our officers took. And unfortunately, that means recording everything. And so whether that camera's body worn, whether that camera is in the vehicle that the officer is driving, whether that camera is activated as a taser is removed from the belt, if that camera is activated when the firearm is released from the belt, that all establishes a chain of command that then has to be housed and organized and protected as evidence. And so there's a cost to doing those things. And, and the fact that we, we protect the public at large, we protect our officers at, at large with a verified and organized and distributed chain of evidence and command that we can then take to a court of law if it becomes necessary and make certain that we are able to have convictions as they prove proper. And so, yes, there's a cost to it. I'm, I'm sorry to say there's a cost to it. But it's a world that we live in. And I spoke a little bit about this at last Wednesday's meeting. There is a responsibility that council bears to protect the interests of the public at large. And every member here has experienced this since we've been here. People believe municipalities have deep pockets, and they love to come after municipalities for large settlements. And we need to be able to act as fiduciary agents of the city. We need to be able to act in the best interest of the city to prove a solidly recorded chain of evidence that will be supported in a court of law to justify the kinds of actions that we take. And so it's, it's a cost of, of doing business. I hate to say it that way. It actually sounds cold and, and impersonal. It's unfortunately the world that we live in. And so as fiduciary agents of the city, it's our role to protect our constituency. And in, in, in a multitude of ways, we need to protect our, our constituency, especially in a post George Floyd world, in where we have all been challenged to rethink policing and what protecting and serving really looks like. And in that, in that, that new reasoning, we understand the importance of protecting both the public and our officers by having the technology that, that can do this. So kind of a long-winded way of saying it, but it's, I think this is one of the more important bills that we've passed in this session. And I wanted to make certain that we got it through today. And I appreciate the efforts of the, our Public Safety Director, our Chief, who came last week, and Councilman Coghill, and our members for supporting this today. And thanks for the time to, to say that, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, and then Councilwoman Warwick, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I also want to thank Councilman Coghill, the committee chair, but also President Smith for kind of getting all of us together with the members of the administration so that we could really continue the conversation that we had at the table last week, which was looking at the, literally every line item of every, of the annual invoices for the future 10 years. And for everyone kind of having the patience and taking the time to dig into what each one of those specific line items were, because that's where we've saved the $6 million here today by questioning exactly how many of each units we needed for each of these very, very expensive body worn camera internet linked systems. So I want to talk about that for a minute. I think Councilman Kraus articulated how it's important for us to kind of have this chain of evidence. And really, the, the public demanded body cameras to protect their rights, right? And so that we have a record of what happens when there are interactions with our police force. And that is, I think, what we need to keep in front of us is, is kind of like, well, what are the citizens' rights that we're protecting? But there's a double sided coin here that I am concerned about. I want to spend a minute talking about. Last week, we, I asked if each one of the body worn cameras would now be linked, like a cell phone, right? Just like, is it, I said, I think I asked, is it so expensive because it's like your cell phone service when you are paying not just for the device, but also to be kind of online 24 hours a day? And the answer at the table was no, the, the kind of cell phone service, expensive part is coming from the car. While we are also linking the cars, and they will be like hotspots. But what was stated at the table by the administration last week was incorrect, what I'm understanding now. And what I was told yesterday by the administration about this contract is that also the now not 950 packages of body worn cameras, but the 900 packages are also internet linked like a cell phone service. And that, I found out yesterday, means that the command center can look through those cameras in real time. So this contract, as opposed to the contract that we're operating under up till today with our body worn cameras, is fundamentally different. So the body worn cameras that our police officers in the room have on right now, there is footage that's stored when they turn it on. But no one can look through them like a little eye, right? They go back to the station, you're downloading data, and that data is stored. This contract changes that so that every single one of the 900 body suits, even 30 of them at a time, can be looked through in live time at our command center. And so, again, I'm just calling attention to this like I did when I found out about the 360 degree camera that can surveil people, that we need to continue this conversation of where we're crossing the line between protecting our residents' rights and infringing upon our citizens' rights. And we're not subject matter experts in all of this, right? And so like I've done before when we had technology that was capable of surveillance, I'm going to be making the calls to those experts. I'm voting today, and I'm grateful that we have the cost savings. But what I learned yesterday while we were digging through the line items concerns me about the capacities and whether our own internal policies are really keeping up. So that was, it's new information, and I'm still trying to figure out and process it. So if any one of those experts at the Brennan Center, the CMU, just a heads up, I'm going to be calling you, the ones that have, have helped us in the past, try to understand this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
It was Councilwoman Warwick.
Did I say Warwick first? I apologize. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I just want to say, yeah, again, thank you to members for, for this, for taking the time to do this. Yeah, of course, this is, you know, these cameras are here in, in a world where we need increased accountability and, and also protections for our own officers when it comes to interactions with the public. I do want to underscore though, just, just for the record, that of course, cameras are not foolproof, right? I, you know, I grew up in Los Angeles. I was in high school during the Rodney King incident, obviously. You know, that was sort of the very first camera incident. So, you know, we're, we're not yet in, in a world where the protection is, is ultimate just because there was a camera present. But at any rate, we're getting there. But the cost is, is, is extreme. Just two things I'd like to say, you know, with, with these big ticket items, I feel as council, it would be helpful to get clear explanations ahead of time so that we don't have to scramble, as we were last night, kind of figuring out, well, what do we have before and what do we have, you know, and just being under pressure at the table to make very fast decisions about, about giant multi-million dollar contracts like this. And I think it's important to underscore that there are no blank checks. We do not write blank checks in the City of Pittsburgh. And, and, and no government should write blank checks, not even for public safety. And I think that that is, that sense is a bit of a trend that is, you know, probably not just here, but, but across the country. And so just to be clear for the taxpayers, us calling into question this contract is, is us doing our job. And also keeping in mind that, you know, this company that we're contracting with is in fact a, a near monopoly and has also, you know, had complaints filed against it for that very reason by, by the FTC and, and by various competitors. So, and, and there were also some questionable issues around our very first contract with this company back in 2017. So I, I do want the public to understand that and understand that as council, yeah, you know, it's, it's our job to make sure that our tax dollars are being spent wisely. We have lots of things that we need to spend money on. And so I really, I want to thank Director Schmidt and, and Director Pollak for sitting down with us and talking through this. But also, I really want to thank the other members, you know, for, for coming to the table. Because this is hard, right? Questioning public safety budgets is hard because it's unpopular. And, but we have to do it. So I want to thank everybody. I think, you know, I, I'm proud of ourselves as a council for, for having done this and having saved, saved this money. And anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam President. I will echo what, a lot of what we've already heard. I want to thank those who came together to work to realize these savings. It's still a tremendous amount of money that we're voting on because of the long term contract. And I'll, I'll repeat what I said last week, that in the future, I'd like to see shorter contracts because honestly, anything could happen with this company. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. It's, it's impossible to predict what our needs might be. I, I understand that the, the leasing of this technology will allow for change within the contract in the future, but still prefer for shorter contracts. Second, as we've, as others have expressed, Second, as we've, as others have expressed, I would like to continue to see our Bureau of Police and our Public Safety Department and really the city continue to reimagine public safety such that we are realizing other savings because of the work we are doing to remove the responsibility of police officers to respond to every call in person, to reduce the number of officers who are actually needed at any one type of scene, to reduce costs in other ways, and eventually get to a point, hopefully, where we will not need to rely on this extraordinary cost for these types of purposes, for tasers, for cameras, for the technology that integrates them all, because we're in a situation where it's just not, where police aren't questioned by the public as much as they are today. That would be my vision for the future, so that's point number two. Point number three is, we are, I appreciate the cost savings, I appreciate that they are based now on a right-sized, from what I understand, number for our police force, but I also want to remind everyone that the city council still has not seen the staffing study for the police that these numbers are based off of, and I personally would like to see that report and the independent study of the police force and the recommendations before voting on any other, especially major contracts of this sort. We really need to have that information, and I understand it's near completion, we should see that. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard a lot today, but I do want to thank the members. Yesterday, we knew that there were, we were kind of divided on council, I think, for four basically what to do, so not on this bill, not only on this bill, there are several bills we're working through, trying to work through as a body, the land bank, the bond, the policing, the police bills. And so we met yesterday, and I want to thank Director Schmidt who came over, I mean, I just called and he came over right away, Director Pollak, but I really want to thank Councilwoman Coghill with your leadership, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Warwick, and Solicitor Friedson also for coming into a meeting last minute, we just pulled it together because I kept hearing this was going to be held, that's going to be held, this, and I thought all these things held is going to make the city not move, and we've just, we're hearing now about lawsuits and other things that we're going to be paying out for our police, and I really want to make sure that we came together to try to work through it, and so with that said, I left it in Councilwoman Coghill's hands, and I said, whatever you do, we're going to follow your lead, and so he said, we're not passing it unless we get some savings to the taxpayers. And so with that said, he talked to Director Schmidt, Director Schmidt, we said he has a new job, we're going to hire him to negotiate all the contracts for everyone, we just think he's done an amazing job, and together, you have all done an amazing job. So I want to thank everyone for working together and for those who were working through all these concerns, because I know every member was part of a conversation with Councilwoman Coghill over the weekend, he was calling everyone, so I want to thank him for that. But with that said, we're ready to vote for these bills, the bills are not ready for, or this is the amendment we're voting on, so if you're in support of the amendment, we have a motion to amend?
No, we did.
We have a second?
We amended.
We have a second, oh, we amended the bill?
Yeah.
We did, we voted, okay, so now we're ready for final passage?
No, we needed, we need to, we had discussion on the amendment, but we need to vote to amend.
That's what I said, did we vote the amendment? Okay, motion, all right, can we have, we voted for the amendment?
Okay, we motioned.
Motion to amend?
All in favor.
I'm sorry, voting on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have to do roll call on it.
Do we have to do roll call, Madam Clerk? On amendment? I've never done it before for amendment, not in the amendment, but for the bills. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, bill's been amended now, we're going to vote, Madam Clerk, please, we're going to take the vote.
Discussion on the amended bill.
Motion on the, discussion on the amended bill.
Very briefly, Madam President, just to put out there for consumption, one of the first things that I remember being charged with when I came onto the council and was chair in public safety was our camera privacy policy, and it has been a very long time since we have visited our camera privacy policy, being probably 15 years old now, and this will be a very good time for us as a council to review our obligation on, as it relates to privacy in a digital cammed world. I just want to put that out there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and I also want to thank our clerk's office and the public, the clerk's office for pulling the amendment together so quickly, under a lot of stress while we were filming, and the public for their patience as we worked through these. But with that said, you've saved us how much, Councilwoman Coghill?
Close to $6 million.
Yeah, and so I just want to thank you and Director Schmidt.
Yep, and Madam President?
And everyone involved.
If I may, I wanted to commend you, you have a knack for getting us together at the right time, you know everything was scrambled and we were going a lot of different directions, so thank you for pulling us together yesterday and coming to this, and I want to thank these council members, you know, and let this be a lesson, everything is negotiable, everything, no matter what contract comes in front of us. And I want to thank council for being fiscally responsible agents for the City of Pittsburgh, and again, Director Schmidt, I want to thank him for his due diligence, he got that turned around within a six-hour period.
Amazing.
And we probably wouldn't be voting on this today if it weren't for him, so, thanks.
Or you, so I want to make sure that's very clear, or you, and the company for their working with us. And with that said, the bills are all ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, we'll vote aye as their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Bills receiving the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions, I have a few meeting announcements. Today at 1:30, council will host a cablecast post-agenda discussion on domestic violence, I'll be chairing this discussion. Council Standing Committees Meeting is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, June 28. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council's meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, tomorrow afternoon, council will hold a briefing with the first session beginning at 1:30 and the second session beginning at 2:00 p.m. This is relative to the updating of the International Property Maintenance Code, PLENI, and lastly, in observation of June 4th, I'm sorry, of the July 4th holiday, city council will be closed on Tuesday. Council's regular standing committees meeting, regular and standing committees meeting are scheduled for 10:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. respectively on Wednesday, July 5, 2023. To register to speak during these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council's meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that said, I hope everyone has a safe and happy 4th of July. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, I have a motion to adjourn, excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.